So you give me a signal or do I give them?
You.
Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of June 24, 2019. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, you have any?
No.
No? Ken?
This weekend, June 30th, Sunday night, marks the 15th anniversary of the Summer Concert Series. Ten weekends in a row, starting with The Brass Kicking Horns, top hits from yesterday and today, that's Sunday night, 6 o'clock. Alliance, Hot Dogs and Hamburgers, everybody knows, it's great free entertainment, bring the family, you can bring your own food if you want, no BYOB though, sorry, sorry guys on that. And The Brass Kicking Horns, the band that's lead off, actually 15 years ago, the very first band to play was members of The Brass Kicking Horns, and they actually feature Ken Reed, Abington resident, so hopefully we'll see you down there on Sunday.
Tim?
I have one, I have a list of events from the Abington Public Library. To save time, instead of reading all the events, I'll direct people to their website where they can find the complete list of events for this upcoming summer. You can find that online at www.AbingtonPL.org. Parents and caregivers with questions should contact Amy Hindle at the Children's Librarian, you can reach her at 781-982-2139, or via email at ABLIB@OCLIN.org. And also, to stay up to date, you can give the Abington Public Library a like on Facebook and join their parent caregiver email list on your next visit. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, and I don't have any. Any public comment on the agenda tonight?
Good evening, Chris Coyle, 154, Karen Lane.
Hey, Chris, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
Tonight, for those of you who don't, I'm also the Chair of the School Committee, and tonight is kind of here for something regarding that aspect of what I do. I've been, I guess I've been informed that there's going to be a committee to appoint a new Town Manager being put together. From what I've gathered via the WATD website, some text messages from people, you're going to be looking for a member of the School Committee to be on that committee. At to date, we haven't heard anything about it officially. We had our last meeting of the year already, last week. We will reconvene for a new one, but we're going to have to try to work around vacation schedules. I'm looking to find out what, in fact, we have one scheduled for tomorrow, if I can get the information I need tonight, otherwise we'd have to cancel it. I'm looking to know what you're looking for, so I can present to our committee what exactly it is you guys need from us. I've received nothing formal to date. I checked with Superintendent Schaefer on the way in, he hasn't either, so just looking for some kind of information, aside from life in Abington.
Okay. Well, the search committee, the school committee appoints someone to that search committee according to the bylaws, correct?
The charter, the charter says one member of the school committee, picked by the school committee, one member from the finance committee, picked from the finance committee, five citizens at large. The makeup is a little different than it was before. The last time we had a Town Manager search, it was no choice, I think the schools of retention was the pick.
It was.
So it's changed a lot. I mean, I did bring it up, and I brought it up at the last meeting, I, maybe I should apologize, I could have sworn I said, "Please let these boards know," but maybe I did not have to watch the video again, but...
I mean, I didn't, so, Ken, I didn't watch the video, I didn't watch it yet. Nobody's let us know. That was my main objective, and I just didn't know, I didn't want to go off of the WATD website, text messages to other members of my committee and of the school committee, and what I'm reading online. I just wanted to get officially what you needed, so we could vote on it and get you guys a name.
I will tell you that I was on the last search committee, and it requires, basically, you put together the ad for the Beacon, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, and then you wait about a month, and then the numbers come in, and you go through, you know, 30, 40 applications, and usually you whittle it down, just right away you can whittle it down, and then the members will probably meet more often. I know we actually met on Saturday, and interviewed maybe 10 people, like one right after another. And then it's the goal of the committee to come back with a minimum of three finalists, report back to the Board of Selectmen, a minimum of three.
Okay. Is there a timeline as to when you would want, as to when those interviews would take place, do you know?
That's basically would be your, the committees-
To decide, right?
To decide, you know, the timeline.
Okay, that makes sense.
So looking from the school committee is to get one of them to be on the search committee?
Okay.
And I know you're going to take a vote, so...
Yeah, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, so tomorrow night, or Wednesday, I can probably send you a name, whoever it ends up being. What's the best way to let you know?
You can send me an email, or you can inform Rick that Town Manager-
I just need to get your email, Tom, I don't have it, that's all.
Okay, I'll get it to you, so...
I think the plan now is for our board to vote the five citizens at large on July 15th.
Okay.
A meeting, I won't be at, but that doesn't, I'll phone in. But at that point, if you're, I'm just making this, throwing this out there, at that point, your delegate and the finance committee delegate would like to be here, will probably give, I would think the board will give them a charge and just let them know exactly what they're looking for.
Okay.
And Rick, will you also make sure we contact FinCon if we haven't done that yet, and let them know that we're looking for a volunteer for me, too? And I apologize for that.
That's all right. Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
They're meeting this Wednesday.
Any other public comment? Okay, if not, any public appointments? No public appointments? Thank you, all right. 6:35, we will have a public hearing, transfer of all alcoholic common victual license, bowling alley automatic amusement and entertainment licenses from Philip N. Hamrick, Timberlains Inc., to John Pumphrey, Webster Timberlains, Inc., 460 Bedford Street. So the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 24, 2019, at 6:35 in the Carter Hearing Room, 500 Kalinowitz Way, for transfer of all alcohol common victual license, bowling alley automatic amusement and entertainment license from Philip N. Hamrick, Timberlains, to John Pumphrey, Webster Timberlains, 460 Bedford Street. So we will open that meeting. All right?
Hi, how are you?
How are you? Thank you very much. Appreciate the time, the board and Town Manager and Assistant. I also want to thank in advance, help that I've received from Nancy and Terry in the Building Department, Nancy in the Selectmen's office, really helped kind of pull things together. It's quite the process to fill out all the paperwork for the ABCC, but they really helped me meet all of the deadlines and the requirements. Certainly willing to answer any questions.
You are John?
I am John.
Okay, I should have had you-
I'm John Pumphrey.
Okay.
Thank you.
I live in Rockland. I'm here with my brother Louis. You know, both of us are going to be working at the alley. I'm going to be the owner, and Louis is going to be helping us out with kind of developing the business. If you don't mind, I'd like to take you, you know, give you a couple of minutes background on myself-
Sure.
-and talk a little bit about, you know, what we're trying to do over there at the bowling alley, and then by all means, I want to answer any questions that you have and have an open dialogue. So, for starters, I'll start off by telling you that, you know, my background, one of the first things, you know, people ask you is like, "What do you know about bowling?" My dad owned a bowling alley for 60 years, so he was in the candlepin bowling business for quite a while, had three different bowling alleys. I worked at two of them. I probably spent, you know, off and on about 30 years working in the bowling business, everything from waiting the counter to fixing the machines. I worked with all the different groups that go in there. And that's really an important piece of the town when you think about a bowling alley. It's not just, you know, any other business that's in town. It's really an area where, you know, everything from the very young, you know, you're talking preschool kids, come all the way up through seniors to recreate, including special needs and things like that. So the bowling alley is really an important part of the community, and it's important, and I take that really kind of seriously, if you will, that, you know, I have to be a good steward of making sure that that bowling alley continues on in that fashion, that it's there to support and serve the community, as well as be a really thriving business for the area. I also have in my experience, a lot of work in construction, I did electricity for three years, and I also, I have three different, you know, degrees that I've acquired along the way, if you will. I worked in business with Verizon for about 20-plus years, and just retired with them last year. So anxious and excited to get into the bowling business, but, you know, a lot of what has kind of formed me coming into this, has kind of prepared me for, you know, managing and operating a building, making sure that it's safe, and it's a great place for people to be, but also appreciating the sport and making sure the community is there for us. Some things that we're planning to do over at the bowling alley, we're going to do a renovation over there. If you've been in there recently, you've seen that the, you know, the bar area, you know, could use for an update. We're also going to be opening up the space so that you can flow from the bar into the bowling alley and back and forth, you know, update all the fixtures and things like that to do with the bar and the kitchen. We're also going to start to expand the food. Currently, right now, the food that is offered is, you know, fried food that goes in the machine. We're going to expand that menu, bring in pizza, bring in some other things. So it's going to give, you know, the community another place to stop in and have dinner and things like that, and really kind of enhance the experience. Nowadays, when you go into bowling alleys, that's a lot of what families and, you know, adults are expecting, is that they can walk in and they can have a decent meal, and they can, you know, participate in the bowling and have a good time. So we're going to do all of those things. I also intend, and I know, you know, in talking with Phil, he's really done a lot of great things for the community. My goal is really to continue all of that, and, you know, I look for the board's recommendations around that as time goes on. Certainly Phil has communicated a lot to me about what to do, and, you know, how to make sure that we kind of treat all of the groups in town. But again, I'm looking for more opportunity to do that. Some of the things that we're going to work with, like my brother Louis is going to work in some of the outside sales stuff, but it's really going to be about, you know, part of it certainly going out to small businesses, asking them to come in and have a little corporate event, but it's also going out to the youth commissions and the school departments and things like that to get them engaged, the youth in bowling and coming down and, you know, enjoying the sport. So we hope to contribute a lot to the community. And, you know, lastly, what I'll tell you is that, you know, tonight's request is to approve a liquor license. The bowling industry, if you've been to other bowling alleys, has kind of changed a lot. In the, you know, years ago, when I first got involved with the bowling alley with my dad, there was leagues every single day and night, and every morning, and 200 kids in the junior league, and all you had to do was open that door and people came rushing in. Nowadays, you need to provide an experience, you need to provide, you know, entertainment for all age groups, and part of that is just that you need to be able to serve alcohol throughout the bowling alley. It's, you know, the mass state law allows it, and every other bowling alley in the near area offers it. So it's a competitive situation that, in order for this business to thrive and grow and remain part of the community, you need to have some of that accessibility. So the request is to have the liquor license transferred, but also to allow it to be expanded to the rest of the bowling alley. And with that, you know, I respect the fact that that will involve some additional challenges. If the board would like, I'd like to just give you, you know, hand out a plan that, I've reviewed this with the Chief of Police as well. You know, part of the process, of course, you have to meet with all the different inspectors and you have to meet with the Chief of Fire and of Police. So I respect the fact that it's going to introduce some additional challenges to the program. It's not just going to be, let's just expand the license and nothing changes. So I really broke it down into three things, really to prevent underage drinking and overconsumption of alcohol, and then also improve the overall safety. Training's a big part of it. Currently, right now, Phil has all of his bartenders certified for tips, which is required. I'm going to expand that to all the bowling operations staff. Also, I'm going to have the bowling alley staff trained in serve-safe allergy awareness and CPR AED, which is not currently required, but because we're going to have more food out there and things like that, I think it adds to the safety. Posting more reminders, and then regular training refreshers. My sister is a certified trainer, she's a corporate trainer, and she's going to be administering the corporate training program for me with the organization, so that we're going to be constantly refreshing people. And then really inspecting, challenging the staff, make sure they understand what they're doing, reviewing the logbook each day to make sure that any issues are addressed. Limiting access, you know, if you've been in the bowling alley, there's really kind of two sections. There's a section that's right in front of the bar today, and they have to traverse hallway and everything else to get to it. All those walls will be gone under the new, you know, configuration. That's where we'll primarily, when adults come in, we will, you know, pretty much put them over in that section, if you will. They'll be near the bar, that's where they want to be, that's fine, and then as families come in. So during times, Saturdays and Sundays, for example, where you're going to get that mixed crowd, we'll kind of create some separation. Limit drinks at the bar, one at a time. Consumption of shots has to be done at the bar, but utilize weight staff stamps or wristbands if we have, you know, really busy times or things like that, where we have a lot of people or special events. You know, we hope to host, you know, we hope to have social hospital come down the street with 6,000 employees, wouldn't it be great to have 150, 200 social hospital employees or the school department go over? You know, you're going to have a large crowd then, so we'll make sure we have weight staff, and that will help us keep track of things. And then improving communication. Renovating the bar actually contributes to that, because today the bartender can serve a beer, and sure, they see the bowler coming and going to drink their beer, but they have no observation to what's going on in the alley. With the new bar configuration, we'll be able, there'll be a horseshoe bar, and they'll be able to see about almost two-thirds, almost three-quarters of the bowling alley, they'll be able to see from the bar. So we really hope that all of this plan is going to help contribute to making sure that we have, you know, a safe, fun environment. I'm not looking to become the local drunk bar, I'm looking to be, you know, a bowling alley that offers a really great product that people want to come to Abington and participate in. So I appreciate the time, hopefully that answered some questions, but, you know, any questions that you have from here?
Well, you're saying that transfer a liquor license and opening up the license to cover entire building? I mean, is that going to be something by the ABC, or is that within the permit already, or?
So on the liquor license today, it says 56 patrons, and it mentions the kitchen and the lounge area. It doesn't mention the bowling area. So technically, Phil's license doesn't cover the bowling area. Phil's certainly here, he could concur to that, but he does not allow any alcohol to go out to that point because his license doesn't cover it. So I'm looking to update the language to include the entire building.
So is that something we need to do, or is that something the ABC needs to do?
Both. After you voted, it would be-
So do they do it first, or do we do it?
The board votes at first, yes.
Thank you. And the hours of the bar operation, are they going to be coincide with the hours of the bowling alley, or are they going to be limited?
Not exactly, the bar technically could go till 12:00 a.m. If you asked me what's common occurrence, you know, especially during like the winter leagues and things like that, people come in and bowl at 7:00. A lot of nights were out of there by 10:00, 10:30. Some nights were open till, you know, to midnight, depending on the night. But those are the hours that we're looking to have for the establishment, goes till 12:00 a.m.
And opening at what time?
The bowling alley generally will open at 9:00 a.m. The bar typically will open at either noon time, or, excuse me, 11:00 a.m. or 5:00 p.m., depending on the particular day.
So I still can't drink there at 9:00 a.m.?
You still can't drink there at 9:00 a.m.
Not inside, anyway.
You can have a soda.
Someday.
Lots of soda, bottles of water.
And I would just want to, again, remind you that it's not just the all-alcoholic, but it's also the automatic amusement and entertainment licenses, too.
Yeah, hey, you know, at a later date, not right away, but at a later date, I will be applying for a building permit to, you know, reposition the arcade within the bowling alley. There's an arcade there currently, we want to reposition it and maybe add some space to it, but that plan is still in motion, that's something, I'll come back, if necessary, I'll come back to have that updated.
So as of right now, you're keeping 24 lanes?
As of right now, I'm keeping 24 lanes, right.
Are you going to be closing for the renovation, or you stay open?
Yeah, that's, I would say, to be determined. The, you know, we do have, we would have the ability under the new license to open up a temporary bar if we wanted to, but, you know, my contractor tells me it might be a three-day thing, that we would have to not have access type of thing, because we can work on half of it and leave the existing half alone, we can work in the kitchen area, which won't really spill over. So to answer your question directly, I would say, I would estimate about three days that would be closed, you know, for the public.
And when do you plan on taking over?
So that's the million-dollar question, literally, right? I said, "That's the million-dollar question."
What's that?
When I take over.
When?
Yeah, so-
Soon as I get the money.
Exactly. The process, as I understand it, is that the Board of Selectmen would vote, it would go to the ABCC, they would determine, you know, they either have, they have 30 days to either respond or approve or deny. I don't have a reason to deny, but they could respond with a request for more information.
Good luck with 30 days.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're much slower than that.
So, I mean, my guess is that will be, you know, we would be in the September timeframe to take over, would be a reasonable expectation.
Are you going to keep the same layout as far as like entrances, or anything changing with that?
Yeah, I mean, the current outside door structure is going to be the same. Interior, there's a hallway between the bowling alley and the lounge area today, that will all be gone, so there'll actually be a little bit better egress, if you will, so...
And you talked about the youth commissions and stuff, and, you know, after school, there's not a lot of places for the kids to go in town, so-
Right.
You know, it's nice, it's convenient, right by the high school, and I appreciate that, if that's, you know, comes to fruition, and the kids have a place to go, and-
Yeah.
Maybe something for them to do after school.
Yeah, we're looking to get out there, be creative. I'm not looking to make a buck on the kids, it's really, I understand the game, you know, if you've tracked candlepin bowling at all, it's had its ups and downs, but there's not enough youth bowling and candlepin bowling today to support the leagues long-term, so we've got a, we're going to, you know, we're going to put a lot of money into the junior program and doing some innovative things to get them engaged. School Department, you know, we'd love to partner with everyone to keep this, get the sport going at the youth level, and then, you know, go from there. But, you know, we're really looking to make a big investment there.
Other questions, Ken?
You mentioned the police are okay with this, with the plan to expand the alcohol?
Yeah, I met the chief, and we reviewed it, and we actually kind of, he came down to the bowling alley. We kind of walked the area, and we kind of looked at the views, and, you know, he reviewed the plan with me, thought this was a solid plan, but like anything else, you know, it's all about execution, so, you know, I understand that, and that's my responsibility to do that.
Now, you're talking about a horseshoe bar that's going to be facing the bowlers, you know, and I like the idea of they can watch the people walk it up to the bar, and see if they're intoxicated, that sort of stuff. Do you plan on, if it's busy, having a weight staff, or is it just going to be, not currently, you're going to have to walk up to the bar and get your own drinks, or?
Yeah, if it is busy, to your point, then we will have a weight staff on, so it'll be, not every night, depending on the night, depending on, you know, because you get in kind of a rhythm when you get into the season. The season usually for candlepin bowling starts in September, it goes till about May, so there's a pretty good rhythm to each night, so you get a handle on what you need for headcount. During the summer, you know, we might see, again, if it's, if we have something going on, a big day, you know, we'll have a waitress scheduled in on staff. Hopefully, the pizza and the restaurant kind of takes off, too, so we're going to have weight staff there, so we're going to have extra people in the kitchen, in the restaurant, out to the bowling alley, so we're going to have a little bit of all of the above.
I will make note that, and I've told this to Phil before, Squire's Loft had the best bar pizza in town for a while, it was really, really good, so hopefully you can bring that back. Honestly, the pizza there was to die for, so. Candlepin, you're planning on just keeping it all candlepin for now?
Yeah, absolutely. Candlepin, when you get right down to it, there's a lot, if you look around, a lot of candlepins being pulled out, and they're putting ten pin in. The problem with ten pin is, the very young, the senior citizens and the special needs groups in town, they get kind of shut out when you get ten pin in there. So, you know, I really believe in candlepin, I want candlepin to be part of the program, you know, permanently, and, you know, we just got to grow the sport and make it, you know, make it big again.
What's your average?
Yeah, less than Louis'. I've had some good games, but my average is a 103 right now, or 100, well, I don't, Phil's laughing, I'm probably a 101.
That's just because the pins are dead. Once you fix it up, you'll be fine.
Oh, we're going to put a lot of effort into it, let's put it that way.
Any other questions from the board? Anything from the public? Or have public comment, but, all right, I'll close the meeting.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous? All right.
Thank you.
No, well, we've still got stuff to do, go ahead.
Is there specific wording that you have to do? Is there specific wording that you need in this motion?
No, just to approve the transfer, it is listed on the agenda that would be-
And that will cover the-
Actually, that would cover all of them, if you want.
The liquor license.
Right, because they're all listed.
As well as listed.
Correct, yes.
Knowing that we could get the best bar pizza in town again, I will make a motion to transfer all alcoholic common victual license bowling alley automatic amusement and entertainment licenses from Philip N. Hamrick, Timberlains, Inc., to John Pumphrey, Webster Timberlains, Inc., 460 Bedford Street.
I'll second.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Can I take this opportunity, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Phil Hamrick for all he's done for the town. No, no, I mean, the fireworks we had would not have been possible without Phil's help. I mean, he was the first person to sign on, he donated a lot of money, not to mention as a member of Alliance, he organized a million penny collection, raised $10,000 for the library, and as Kevin spoke about, it's a safe place for our kids, and you really embrace the kids and help the kids in this town, so, thank you, thank you very much.
John says he's going to raise a million bucks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, so, good luck.
Good luck, everybody.
Oh, we still got a ways to go.
All righty. Action discussion items, approval of June 10, 2019, open session minutes.
Actually, just just brought up a point. I noticed that it looks like a used car dealership in Abington has gone out of business, I see removed all their cars. Did they notify you, do they need to notify you, or do we not approve the F1 on Bedford Street? I just noticed all their cars are gone.
I cannot have to look into that, I'm not sure, but if they don't-
Are they required to let us know if they're going?
They're not, well, they're not required to, but they should be letting us know if they want to, they're going to let their license lapse.
You may want to have the building inspector check that, because I noticed that all the cars that's on Bedford Street across from-
That's F1?
The health stop, I think.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's fairly new to town, but-
Yeah.
Just in case we don't have any more of the problems we've had in Brockton, now, leaving and coming in. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Any motion on the minutes?
Oh, actually, we held Steve's Automotive Correct at this meeting, and they were supposed to be in tonight?
No, the 15th, July 15th.
Oh, July 15th, we gave it until, oh, a month, July 15th.
Yes. Now, they have not still completed all the paperwork that they're supposed to be submitting, so it may very well be that they're not even eligible by the 15th, but we'll keep you updated.
But they're well aware, right? They've been informed.
Yes.
Sometimes, you know, being a short staff, I just wanna make sure that they, it was communicated to them.
Contacted, messages been left, um, just like considering whether to send a certified letter or not, because they've been, you know, outside, we haven't been able to communicate with them otherwise.
Again, any motion on the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of, uh, session minutes of June tenth, two thousand nineteen.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any further discussion?
I did.
Ken was the second.
You're looking down, I can't see.
No further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Unanimous. Alright. Approval of St. Bridget's Sixth Annual SBSPTO Freaky Five-K Road Race on Saturday, October ninth, uh, I'm sorry, October nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. I do have, we have a letter here from Kelly Kennedy, uh, to whom it may concern, and writing this letter on behalf of the St. Bridget's School Parent Teacher Organization to request permission to hold the Sixth Annual SBSPTO Freaky Five-K Road Race on Saturday, October nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. The race will follow a three-point-one mile route, starting and ending on Central Street. All pre and post-race activities will occur on the grounds of St. Bridget's School. The race will begin at eight forty-five a.m. and be completed by ten a.m. In the past, we have closed Central Street from eight a.m. to ten a.m. We have police details at all intersections. I have reached out to the, to Chief Majenski and Chief Nutall, and they are in support of us holding the race again. Our goal with this event is for, for a fun, community, family-oriented event that promotes health and wellness to our school community, as well as to the community at large. We have dedicated team of volunteers prepared to make sure this event is a success. Over the last five years, we have been able to raise over fifty thousand dollars for our school, as well as a beneficiary to a member of the community in need. We appreciate your prompt attention to this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me should you need any further information. Kelly looks forward to hearing from us.
Make a motion to approve the Freaky Five-K Road Race on Saturday, October nineteenth. Yeah, it's already been approved, but please use something, yeah.
I'll make that motion. Okay, and second? Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Alright. Alright, three votes will approve discontinuance of the AccuVote Scan Tabulator and replace it with the ImageCast Precinct Tabulator. Alright, and we have a letter from the Secretary of the Commonwealth Election Division. This notice of determination is pursuant to MGL Chapter fifty-four, Section one thirty, uh, Section thirty-four. The Board of Selectmen of this, of the, this town of Abington hereby voted their meeting on June twenty-four, two nine, two thousand nineteen, approved the discontinuance of the AccuVote Optical Scan Tabulator, and voted to replace it with the ImageCast Precinct Tabulator. The approved purchase of the ImageCast Precinct Tabulator will be purchased by the town pursuant to the annual town meeting vote on May twentieth, two thousand nineteen, authorizing this purchase. Per MGL Chapter fifty-four, Section thirty-four, we hereby vote to use the use of the ImageCast Precinct Tabulator at Abington Elections, beginning January twenty twenty, and thereafter, at all primaries, preliminary elections, and elections held in the town of Abington until otherwise ordered by vote of the Abington Board of Selectmen. Said electronic voting system shall be used in those polling places designated by the Board of Selectmen. We need a vote on that.
What, what differences are the voters gonna see when they go to vote? Does that make sense?
Uh, it makes sense, but I'm actually not really sure. The, the main problem with the, with the former, uh, voting machines is they were twenty-plus years old, and they just really couldn't be serviced anymore. So, that was the major problem at that time, and, uh, but, as you know, um, voter, um, what I wanna say is, people a little more conscientious about security these days of, of, uh, elections, and uh, so this system is, is something that the state also recommends for security purposes. But in terms of what you visually see, I'm not sure, Tim.
It's not like fancy computers with levers, it's, they'll still vote the same way.
And they weren't manufactured in the Soviet Union, so.
Okay.
Will it still be paper ballots?
They'll be electronic, but there'll be, I believe there will still be a ballot, uh, a paper ballot generated. But you're, you're not gonna actually be, uh, I think, voting by paper, you're gonna put it in the machine. The machine can, can, can print paper ballots or receipts, so to speak. That's my understanding. But once again, I have to get some comment from the, from the, uh, town clerk on that. Happy to get your follow-up memo to that extent.
We're not in a hurry to approve this, since it's not gonna be till, used till next April?
Well, well, it's already, you, the machines have actually already been purchased, so, um, they're, they're going to be used.
So, who purchased the machines?
Uh, well, the town clerk already has put the order in. Again, the town has appropriated the funds, and she had her order lined up in anticipation of that.
Right, we voted on it.
Oh, no, absolutely, but I'm sure if the state approves these, it's not a big deal, but it would just be nice to know what we're spending our money on, you know? I mean, I don't wanna hold up the process, but it'd be nice to know exactly what it is we're talking about, with the advantages. I guess the advantage is that they accept this, and they won't accept the old.
That's pretty much what, they're being discontinued for, around the state.
And the state requires this, like, just so they know what you use for voting systems? I mean, are there other options? Well, it doesn't, it doesn't matter anyway, we bought them, so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the discontinuance of the AccuVote Scan Tabulator and replace it with the ImageCast Precinct Tabulator.
I'll second it.
Alright. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please. Aye?
Aye.
Bought.
We bought, thank you.
What we bought, that's what we bought.
Alrighty. Four and one abstention.
Three, three.
Jim's out. Three, oh yeah, Jim's out, I forget. Alright, Town Manager Search Committee Application Status. Rick, you wanna comment on that, please?
No, you've got them all, so. We've had significant amount via email. Uh, we have, you have copies of those, uh, we did receive some additional today, as today was the closing day for applications. Um, as Mr. Coyle mentioned, uh, that, you know, they're gonna be making their designation, I believe you said tomorrow? So, there's a meeting tomorrow, and the Finance Committee is meeting, uh, this Wednesday. They're also, I think, be meeting the, uh, second week in July, perhaps. Uh, so they are aware of this, I believe, but I will, gonna contact Matt Salo to, uh, mention it to him again, Mr. Chairman.
They, they have to be in by now, or they have tomorrow, that they can turn them into?
Well, the, uh, the Board of Selectmen basically said by the meeting on the, the twenty-fourth, so it's up to you if you wanna extend that or not.
Make sure. So, it looks like we have fourteen applications for five positions.
Yep.
That's exciting. It is.
That's what?
It's exciting.
That's exciting, alright.
So, can we, um, can we read these names just so that people will know that their application is in, and in case somebody?
Might have gotten in, that's a good idea.
Might have, and, uh, thought they put it in, and haven't, could contact tomorrow and find out.
Uh, no, no particular order. Uh, Paul McDonald of Spruce Street. Samantha Hall Linehan of Hancock Street. Cynthia Whiting, uh, Colonel Hunt Drive. Ann Welch, eighty-one Highland Road. Thomas Tardy, ninety Everett Street. Richard Smith, ninety-nine Dorsey Street. Jack Kane, two-twenty-five Central Street. Rick Collins, seventy-four Orange Street. Jim Coughlin, one-fifty-three Helen Drive. Ellen Delaney, eighteen Washington Street. Andrew Burbine, thirty Lantern Lane. Karen Bowen, nine-thirty-seven Plymouth Street. David Shalas, seven-nineteen Thayer Street. William Adamchick, I might have pronounced that name wrong, if I did, I apologize. Five-fifty-four Hancock Street. That's the list of what we have now. And in case, if you did put in, you think, if you didn't get contacted, uh, please contact, uh, Town Manager, uh, tomorrow. Please, right?
Thank you for everyone who put your name in.
Yes, I appreciate everyone. It won't be an easy task, but.
Is, um, are we asking those, those residents to try to come to the meeting on the fifteenth, correct?
July fifteenth, yes.
If they can't, we'll certainly read what their application says, and still take them into consideration, but if they could be here, that, then speak on behalf of themselves.
I will be away that meeting, but I do intend to phone in, just to vote on this.
You plan on what, phoning in?
Phoning in.
Jim?
I promise you do better than. I might Skype.
So, our next meeting will be the fifteenth, then? July fifteenth?
July fifteenth.
Right. I just wanna be sure. Alrighty. Alright, special employee, special municipal employee status. That's the list of those positions that have been voted by the Board of, as special municipal employees. These do not have to be voted every year unless the Board wishes to make any additions or deletions to the list. We have not received any request for inclusion on this list. So, these was voted back on July sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. Any questions or comments?
Um, just like to make a, a comment that anybody who's known me through the years, uh, I basically vote pretty much across the board that special municipal employee status should not be granted to anyone. I know the Board of Selectmen, we do not, we're not allowed, we're not allowed to have it. In our public policy, it's, it's in our Town Government Committee handbook, and the Board's policy, which was last updated, this policy was twenty-twelve, um, it's gonna be a next cert. The Board of Selectmen strongly believes that in order to promote public confidence in the administration of town government, a municipal employee's loyalty must lie first with the town, and the special municipal employee status should be granted only in very limited circumstances. The Board is of the opinion that in general, positions, committees, and boards that set public policy have regulatory authority or have appointing authority shall not, should not be granted special municipal employee status. So, I just wanted to make sure that, that, that's the, our Board's policy. I mean, we can change that at some point, but that's the, that's the policy right now. And it's basically what the state says, that, um, can be assigned to certain municipal, um, they say in limit, in a limited, um, it seems to us that, it seems to me that the Board has the last couple of years pretty much granted to anyone who asks for it. And I know there's a, there's some scare tactics, like, oh, if you don't get this. It basically loosens, it broadens the conflict of interest of the law, and personally, I think it should be tightened. That's just my personal opinion, so. Jen, to the Jim? Yes, it's, it's very complicated, but if you are a special municipal employee, there's two sections of the conflict law that apply less restrictively, um, to people that have been designated special employee, special municipal employees. So, um, let me see if I can find the two. It's, it's, it's a very complicated, uh, acting on behalf of others, so if you are granted special municipal employee status, you can, I, I don't want, how to use this example, but if you are a lawyer, if you, if you are special municipal employee status, you can represent a neighbor in front of the, in the zoning board, or the Board of Appeals, that sort of stuff. Um, it, it can create a.
Lets, it lets you be in conflict, basically. It's letting you, it's approving you to be in conflict, I guess, if you would.
It doesn't approve a conflict, what it does is actually, uh, precludes you from, from having a conflict, um, where it otherwise might exist, um, which we may be saying the same thing from a different angle here, but, but I think Ken's, uh, example was a pretty good one. If you're on, for instance, the Board of Health, and let's say that, uh, Tim was on the Board of Health, and he was a, you know, a civil engineer, um, he otherwise couldn't, like, represent a client before, you know, planning board or something, unless he has special municipal employee status. So, it more or less allows him to, uh, to pursue his profession, um, even though he's on another board or committee. Now, you couldn't represent somebody in front of the board you sit on, that would, but that would, you still have a conflict of interest. Um, and it also allows people to serve in multiple, uh, roles. Um, let's say, for example, um, you're a, a resident of Abington, and, you know, you serve on a committee, it would allow you to serve on multiple committees at the same time. So, there are some, there's value to it, but to what extent the Board finds it appropriate, uh, that's, again, that's, that's up to you.
I mean, there's, this right here, I mean, there's twenty-one different, between boards and, and positions, twenty-one. I mean, I don't know how many people that boils down to, is it, it's not just, it goes by the position, not by the person, correct?
Correct.
And that is a lot of people that.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I get, I get it if it's in a smaller, little rural town, something like that. I mean, here, we have, we're a pretty big town, we have a lot of people that volunteer, but.
That's where the conflict I have falls in, because I do agree with everything Ken said. I also see openings on boards and committees, and it's like, jeez, do I really wanna restrict them more on who would do it, you know? Certain people without this status would, do, need to drop off their board, or they may want to. Volunteers are tough to come by these days.
And they are, they're very, they're very tough to come by, unfortunately.
We've had a few volunteers lately for other boards, I mean, it seems picking up. It's, it's, we're not a town of a thousand people, we're a pretty big town, we have a lot of people in town, and it, me as a state employee, I mean, I, I get this, I, I don't think, I, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people here, there's a lot of lists, I don't, I don't agree with it.
Even though I, I'm against it for anyone, I'm, I can see cases where, um, if someone's on the planning board, and they're a builder, and they wanna go over the plans before the zoning board, I can see, you know, that's their livelihood. But for the most part, I think most of these, I mean, I don't wanna specify, but I mean, cultural council, uh, you know, register of voters, that sort of stuff. I, I just don't see the, the need in making the rules less stringent for some people. Again, my personal opinion.
Do you wanna put on, for a future agenda, maybe to go over case by case? I would hate to do it tonight without, uh.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I wouldn't do it tonight either.
I mean, it's, it was on the agenda for forty-eight hours notice, I mean, no one's here. You know, if that's, if it's not important for somebody, I don't see them here, you know? I mean.
It does get revoked every year.
It's not like it's permanent, it's, you know, next year, we'll come back up again.
It is permanent till we revoke it.
Yeah. But, next year, it'll be voted again, or something will come up.
Yeah, but, well, the impression I'm getting, from true anyway, is that we should revoke it. Am I misinterpreting that? No, I didn't think so. So, I mean, again, that, and I agree, I mean, none of them showed up, but I, I don't think, they thought that it's just an opinion, that we were gonna, if we voted that way, to revoke it.
Well, yeah, and, and I guess the bigger question is, how many people actually know that they have this status, or, or need it? You know, is this something that they all know they need? I mean, how many of the, how many of these boards are in conflict that need this status, do we know?
Well, keep in mind, you only need one member of a board, because the, uh, the, uh, the status applies to everybody on a board. It's not by name, it's by position. So, for example, if one member of the Board of Health requested special municipal employee status, and it was granted, that applies to every member of the board.
Right, and that member of the Board of Health could be off the board now.
They requested it last year, but that's just, you know.
They may not need it again.
We don't have, we, we, you know, mayors and selectmen don't have it, correct, if I'm correct, you know?
First priority should be the town, that's what I, that's the way I look at it.
What about our, um, putting it on the agenda for the July twenty-ninth meeting, maybe? Um, the fifteenth, we're gonna do the Town Manager, um, applications for the committee, so that should take a lot of time. You won't be here that day. You okay with that?
I mean, it, it's on the agenda, I mean, if, if anyone is.
I'm personally not gonna vote to revoke anybody's tonight without them here to represent themselves.
That's fine, I mean, we disagree on it.
Yeah.
That's why we have, well, meanwhile, it's posted.
If you wanna do it tonight, it's not gonna go anywhere, so.
Well, that's the case, then. I will make a motion to, uh, remove the special municipal employee status. I will make a motion to remove the special municipal employee status of all town boards.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye.
What was the, I'm sorry, the motion was what specifically?
Remove the special employee status.
For all of the people on here? Okay.
But it didn't carry.
Didn't carry.
So, what I would ask, so...
Go ahead, sorry.
The two of you, or Jim can bring it back up at a future date, I believe, that's the way, Rob, it's rules work.
He would have to be on the agenda, but yes.
Yep, and I would move that we put it on the agenda for July, what, did we say? Twenty-ninth?
Well, yeah, our next meeting's fifteen, I didn't get to twenty-nine, it'd be our meeting after that.
Yep, and Ken would be here, so, thank you.
I have to stay on the schedule.
So Rick, will you put that on the agenda, please, or have it put on the agenda for July twenty-ninth?
Notify...
I'm sorry?
We will notify all of the boards and committees.
They'll all be notified tomorrow.
And I think it's very, I'm sorry?
Oh, they'll notify.
They'll notify.
They'll notify me tomorrow, is what you're...
There you go.
So are we withdrawing that motion and vote?
No, it didn't carry anyways.
Didn't carry.
I didn't hear the count, I'm sorry.
Two-two.
Two-to-two, yes, yeah.
It was against him.
Well, in, against the motion was Mr. Chapin and Mr. Clark.
Split right down the middle, right here.
All righty. Agenda action discussion number six, exploratory committee on regional services.
I spoke at length about trying to get together with some of the other local towns. I know there's been a push by the state government to do some consolidation and some regionalization, and I know the town manager's been working on this in the past, and he's actually shown some good progress, and I didn't, I don't want you to take this that I was superseding and not thinking you were doing a good job in this.
Oh, no, not at all, yeah.
Because, you know, I spoke about the benefits of, you know, our health district, I mean, our veterans' district with the other town. So, but I would like to see if there's some interest. And to be honest with you, I think the sky's the limit. In other words, I think we're just touching the tip of the iceberg, not, there's so many things that we could do, and, you know, our town might have ideas, but another town might have ideas. I was at a function, actually, I should probably, I should have did this, and I want to congratulate, oh, Nancy Reed was honored by the Rotary, local towns are Rotary, and so was Brenda Pinoni for all their volunteering in the town of Abington. So they were honored, and at that function, I met the chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Hanson was honored also, and so I spoke to her, and she thought this was a great idea. She actually had the example, they have a district also with, I think, because they're a budding, Hanover and Hanson have share of veterans' agent, too. She actually just mentioned that they're in, looking for a town planner, you know, but they can't do it on their own. So my thoughts are to, after, you know, if we get approval tonight, approach neighboring towns, and just, just ask them to sit down here in Abington, and if they're interested, the next month, we can meet at another town. But my, my thoughts were, Abington, Rockland, Whitman, East Bridgewater, Hanson, maybe Holbrook, it's in a budding town.
Waymouth?
Waymouth is a city, and honestly, Waymouth, Waymouth, Branch, and Quincy did exactly this, and they went out to bid together for a trash contract. And, you know, they're three towns, they got a great, great, great deal, they all saved money, because that's the kind of stuff that we can do, I think. Trash contracts, now all the towns following our lead, they're doing the joint barrels, you know, the semi-automatic, I mean, it would be simple enough, I say simple, it would be complicated, but it would make it worth our while to maybe go out to bid and, and time it, so that all three towns, the contract expires at the same time, and strengthen numbers and go out to bid. That's just one small example. But if, if we do this, I would like to approach the town, each town to go to their people, their departments, and say, you know, hey, Park and Rec are DPW, do you think you could share any services, you interested in, and, you know, do you have any ideas? And just ask the different departments. We talked about BAT, bus routes, we talked about police and fire, obviously, you know, with their, their centers, their call centers, dispatch. I mean, we're doing a lot of this already, but I think there's, there's room for improvement, and I think that by asking the other towns and asking all the departments in town, we're going to come up with a lot of great ideas. So, that's my thoughts. I have, I printed out tons and tons of stuff from the Mass MMA website, and different ideas that have worked, and different, you know, and I would, before we talk further, I'd like Rick to maybe touch upon some of the things that he, that I didn't even know you were working on, you know, some joint aspects.
Sure. I know some of the, working off some of the things that were mentioned by Ken at the last meeting, some of these, as, as you can see, have not been, have stalled a bit because of some transition, we'll say. We, we have, we've, we have spoken to Rockland in the past, as well as Whitman, about a potentially, a, a planner that would be, and there's some value to that, you know, to the extent that you have a budding towns, there's, there's a lot of commonality. On the other hand, sometimes those can be competing interests. However, when you don't have a planner, any, any part-timer obviously is a good way to start. At the time, certainly, Rockland was not interested, and subsequently, there hasn't been the opportunity for other conversation. I know that there's been some turnover on the board, too, Ken, so even conversations at that level. It may be a good time to approach them, but as you know, it's been a little bit off limits. So, the other, you know, we talked about animal control, that's been a little, little bit tricky, because, you know, our former animal control officer worked for both towns, but not as a region. When you do create a full-time position, similar with the veterans' agent, now you obviously have to also deal with, with benefits. They're certainly split between parties, but on the other hand, you know, people do, towns try to stay away from that, because that's a significant expense. We did talk, I did talk to the fire chief when we were looking at the ladder truck a couple of years ago, you know, for about 1.1 million, the concept of maybe sharing not just that, but in general, fire apparatus. Now, we didn't get to the point where to talk about a potential fire district with some of our neighboring communities. That might be the third rail. You guys can speak to people about that. But the chief also, did explain some of the necessities of having our own equipment, including a ladder truck. And again, that was, that was before the, the, the dead exclusion vote for, for that. Going forward, as, you know, we haven't talked about it in depth in this, this forum, but the requirements of the stormwater, stormwater requirements by the EPA, and I know you specifically brought up maybe sharing equipment, Ken, but I think this is more of a ripe for a regional procurement of private services because of all of the requirements. The town doesn't have the equipment now, or the manpower as it is, to meet the requirements going forward of the MS four stormwater permitting. But like I said, that could be a procurement opportunity, more so than a sharing of equipment. I did mention, as you know, the potential of a health district with some of our neighbors, and Marty is currently already kind of helping and pitching in Hanson, so sometimes that's how these things develop, kind of on their own. So that's ongoing, but there've been issues with Whitman and Hanson, too, recently, so we, those conversations will continue once things become a little more stable. And I'm sure you're all aware of the, the Regional Dispatch Center in Holbrook, that's obviously been a really, a great opportunity for, they've got nine towns right now that are involved in that. Our police department is not yet, now that they can utilize the civilian dispatchers, that's something the chief is considering, too. And there are, there are forums between our regional purchase group and our managers' groups, so we can work off those, but we'll be happy to notify the boards of selectmen in these other towns, as you suggest, Ken, to sit down and meet with whomever.
If it's agreeable to the board, I'd like to maybe get, you know, myself and another member of the board, and the town manager, or administrator in the other towns, involved, you know, just offer it up, you know, two members of the board. If some of the towns, if some of the towns only have three members of the Board of Selectmen, it should just be one person, it can't be two, but, you know...
I think that's a good idea. I think we don't, I think we can form a subcommittee, we don't have to take a vote on it or anything, and I think it is something that we should do, and we can work with, those members could work with Rick, or the other communities.
I'd just like to reach out to them, see if there's interest, see what towns are interested, get together, and then come back and say, you know, yeah, let's, then, now let's reach out to the departments and see what their ideas are.
Okay. So who would like to be on the subcommittee?
I'll do it up, I'd be on it.
I'm thinking Ken probably already volunteered with a, with a new word.
I just want to be, well, I want to be sure, so. Ken?
Two's enough.
Two's enough, all right.
We don't need a quarrel.
Good enough, that's good, that's true.
Well, with, tell me to just help, I'll reach out to the neighboring towns, I don't know if we have any thoughts about Holbrook or not, maybe since we're already involved with them, with the call station, maybe we should involve them.
Yeah. I, I think it's a great idea, I mean, and not saying that, you know, that it's not getting done, just, we, sometimes you have to come up with your own ideas.
Sometimes it also, we can use it to formalize, we already have unwritten agreements that we're going to provide, maybe we can make it more formal, you know, that sort of stuff.
Yeah, we, we have a, not a, we've got a small technical issue right now with our regional water district. Keep in mind, that is a separate legal entity from the town of Abington, and there is already some sharing of equipment, some sharing of manpower, which is good, except that we really should have a, a services agreement in place that covers things like liability, workers' comp, you know, what should happen if someone from the town of Abington is, is working with the water district, and he or she gets hurt. So these things should be worked out in an intermunicipal agreement, so that's something that we'll be dealing with.
It would fall under this, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
So I will draft a letter to our, and I will send it to, a copy to you and, and Kevin, and have you review it, and we'll take it from there.
Another exciting thing going on, thank you. All right. Action number seven, town managers' report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a few things, I'll keep it a little bit shorter than what I've written to you, but the, that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman, was that the? The marijuana negotiations for applications, you know, you've, you've seen both, the, our attorney is, is trying to, ensuring that the, the language in both of these meets, you know, the legal requirements, and trying to keep these standard. Eventually, they'll have to be some, there's only a couple lines to fill in with regard to these, these agreements. So we're still waiting for what you'd call a final proposals on such things, like community contributions, those types of things. It is tricky, because these contributions are supposed to be specifically in line with impact on the community, so. So nothing specific here yet, except that one of the things I pointed out in, is in your packet, is a layer, a letter from the mayor of Waymouth, and one of their counselors, concerned about the town's citing of these facilities where they're currently zoned, and this has been forwarded to both of the proponents, as I'm not sure we want to fight their battles for them legally. So I expect some response from them, that we can also share with town council, and, because obviously, this is a, perhaps a, a legal dispute that could be somewhat costly, but once again, the proponents, in my opinion, should bear the, the cost of this to the extent possible.
So, reading the letter, Waymouth, the mayor of Waymouth is not happy because Waymouth did not allow retail marijuana sales in their town.
Correct.
And they're not happy that Abington chose to make the district a but Waymouth, so to speak, that's, that's...
Sure. And some of the requirements in our bylaw with, you know, say, you know, proximity to homes, and our bylaws are specific to Abington, and don't necessarily take into account Waymouth residents, et cetera. So there's some of those items pointed out, in terms of the Abington's bylaw, that wouldn't be consistent if Waymouth, if, if Waymouth residents, and that's just one example, were located in Abington. So, again, these, these are zoning issues above, above my head at the moment, and the lawyers will have to figure this out, but once again, the proponents should be, although the, obviously, there's a financial interest by the town, perhaps a significant financial interest, in terms of dealing with the legal issues raised by Waymouth, again, I think the proponents should be bearing the burden of that, for the most part. And we don't need to get into the town hall again, but one of the, just the fire feasibility study, the funding that was approved at town meeting, we have a request for qualifications that has now been sent out, will be actually appearing in the central register this week. I'm sorry, the goods and services bulletin, I may have gotten any correct. And the utility easement at the senior center, that the saga continues, at one time, we were looking at a utility easement and a possible emergency access, now it's simply a utility easement. Whether or not this goes forward, again, it's Board of Selectmen, it's, at some point when we have these proposals in, whether it's one or more, we'll certainly have to determine whether or not you feel this is in the town's best interest. However, there were, at some point in the past, the Board did authorize this procurement to go forward. Again, doesn't mean you're going to eventually sign a contract on this easement, but that is going forward again.
Ken, we received an email today about mitigation for that, that project, does that have anything to do with the easement?
No, that has to do with, that's a zoning board of appeals, an appeal by the proponents of a zoning board of appeals decision.
Okay.
So some other projects we have coming up after town meetings, some procurements that are online, we're all aware about the senior center roof project, the town hall and library carpeting, and fortunately, or unfortunately, as I mentioned earlier in my notes, that the damage from our sewer backups here at town hall did cause some, we will be replacing some of the carpeting on the first floor, and that will be an insurance recovery, so as I mentioned, that's the only good thing that has come from that, is, is that we'll be saving money from the $160,000 that was appropriated for replacing the town hall and the library carpets. The curbing, town hall curbing, paving of the town hall, walking paths at dairy, at Griffin's Dairy, additional pickleball courts, the Millennium Field entrance, those are some of the procurements we have on tap coming up. The dog park continues to move along, the main question right now is the need and the cost of, of electricity to the site. There was a thought that perhaps we could use solo lighting and not have to bear the cost of run, running electricity to the site. That is probably not going to, I mean, that's, that's, people believe, the committee believes that that is, we need to run electricity there. Right now, the cost is, we have an estimate of approximately $21,000, and because it's not over $25,000, the estimate, we should be able to get through that with, without a sealed bid, bidding process. So that's, within a couple of weeks, there's a decision that's going to have to be made on that. Once again, this, these, this funding is, you know, either through volunteerism, through the Stanton Foundation, or within the funding that was approved at town meeting. And Ken had mentioned, questioned the Glindowitz Way Underground Utilities, and as of right now, that is, I guess you'd call it dormant as a project. The, the civil engineers who, who took a look at this at the request of the project manager for KEB Architects, they had a, had estimated about $600,000, and I know that's something that the Board was aware of, however, it will take, this is a project that will have to be professionally designed, it's not simply a matter of hiring a contractor to do this, or utility. And that will take some time, that would, you know, again, take a procurement process, and whether or not it's something that's in the town's best interests, that's a question for a town meeting, and ultimately, perhaps the ballot box. None of that money would be reimbursable by MSBA as part of the building project. The other piece of this is that there is funding... The other piece of this is that there is funding within the project for repaving of Glenowitz Way, and the original thought was, if we're gonna do something by, for bearing utilities, we'd want to do that before the paving of Glenowitz Way. However, in light of the fact that bearing utilities will take at least a couple of years, and may never be approved by the town, the paving is going to, is going forward. So, that's really where it stands, whether or not it's, it's ever gonna happen, that's, again, that's ultimately gonna be another decision in the future by town meeting, and again, perhaps the ballot box. Certainly, the town could, you know, town meeting could approve it, and it could be a bond issue under the, within the levy limit, those, again, to be determined. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, at the moment.
Questioning the procurements, where do we stand on the police department's study?
I have four or five vendors that I've contacted, in fact, Ken has given me some. Couple I've, that I had, won't do the project, they don't have the time or the resources at the moment. As you know, the money becomes available July 1, so, other than have it, getting some companies that have gone back to me with interest, that's where it stands at the moment. One vendor, the Collin Center, actually, UMass Boston, did give me an example of what they've done for another community, which, which in some ways may be a template for, again, the same thing, a request for qualifications, and that's also the basis for the amount that we put, that we requested from town meeting. I believe the town, we were using as an example, I think they were about $18,000 for their project, we have asked for and received $30,000, because we're a much, much bigger town. So, that's where we are at the moment, again, solicited some interest, gotten some interest back, but we don't exactly have a full scope of services yet.
Any timetable when we can expect it to reach us?
I guess the timetable is what you'd like it to be for me to accomplish, so I would say by meeting in July, I can have it, an informal scope that the board can review. I mean, that's the key, is we want to make sure it's, that the board gets what the board wants, so I can have an informal scope put together for your review before that time. And, again, eventually, we have to provide that to the potential vendors, and I don't, I would not want to be putting that out with the board, saying, yeah, this is, this is specifically what we, what we want.
Right, so if we could, that should be our next step, then?
Yeah.
Is it, is us to?
Right, we have interests...
Up the scope that you should, could be sending out to the companies?
Right, and again, I'll, I'll propose a scope, obviously, but that's, you know, in light of the fact that this isn't simply, you know, we're not buying widgets, we're actually looking for a specific professional service, similar to the fire building project feasibility study, I mean, this is, that's more of a boilerplate than something like this, but I'm sure that a lot of management studies, there are a lot of standard, standardization of those, so. So, I'll, I will draft a scope based upon what I've seen, and give the board copies of that, and you can decide how you want to do it.
Yes, yes, as a working document.
Yep, as a working document, please.
Could you get us the template for Collin Center?
Yes.
Ahead of time, because I may have some, some ideas we can kind of glean from that.
I can email that to you tomorrow, if you'd like, yes. If you want it, you want it printed, you'll have to let me know, because it's a lot of paper.
Ken, anything?
Why are you asking me?
Yes, I do. Before Bob Manning left, he had a good idea, I know it's hard to believe, but I'd like to put on the agenda, old business. I actually received an email from another resident in town who I respect, don't always agree with, but I respect, and he, they commented that, you know, they could sense my frustration at the last meeting about all the stuff that kind of falls through the cracks, we talk about it, nothing gets done, so I would like to have old business, and the stuff that we don't get to, because during the meeting, I'm writing stuff down, housing partnership, telephone poles, we cover that, center schools, stuff just, and then, we have no excuse for ourselves, you know, and then, as it gets discussed, lists could get bigger, it could get smaller, we could cross it off, you know, and now you see it on the agenda, it kind of, oh, we need to work on that, and actually, the town manager will see it, too, and say, oh, yeah, I'm gonna give a report on that in the, you know, in my manager's report, so I'd like to see, you know, a discussion item at every meeting, old business, you know, and we can talk about, and members can feel free to add to it, you know, but I'd like them to stay on there until it gets resolved. Kind of like, we have our list of goals and objectives, maybe some of that can, can be on there. I just don't, I hate discussing stuff, and then having to bring it back up two months, two months later, and not getting touched upon, so.
Right, but I, well, and I could be wrong, but I think the only, you go put that on as old business, but that, it would just be old business, in other words, we're not, you wouldn't be listing all the old business that we had.
Yeah, we could.
I think we would, I think it would be good to have a working list.
Okay.
The only thing that...
Careful what you wish for, that's all I'm saying, is careful what you wish for, I don't disagree, but...
No, then people can discuss, you know, bring it up in public comment, I have no problem with that, because we want to discuss that stuff.
That's not what I'm worried about. But I'm, I'm fine with it.
It was my idea a couple of months ago to do that, I, we had a conversation about it, so I haven't changed my mind, I think it's a great idea.
Really? It wasn't Bob Manning's, it was yours?
It was my, Bob had talked about how we used to do it, we had a conversation about it, it was...
It's a good idea.
It was a good idea, it was a great idea, huh?
I forget, there were some objections that night. There were some objections that night, I don't remember.
It's old business anyways.
Yeah, put on old business.
Would've been on the list.
So, I don't think we need permission, I just think we'll have the old business on the agenda from going forward. Okay, Ken?
That's all I got.
Really?
I can add more.
Just kidding, I'm kidding. So sensitive. Kevin? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor? Aye. Motion to adjourn.